... United States of America, the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oliver, is it in?
Yes.
Kathy Burnham?
Yes.
Oliver Burnham Thompson.
Approval of the agenda.
You make the motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion made.
Second.
All favor. Aye. Any vote? Motion passed. Consent agenda, we have a motion to make.
You make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second.
Motion made, second. All. Any votes? Consent agenda passed. Public forum. Anybody here want to speak about closing the city park? As we continue on with this? Anybody? No? Nobody has concerns?
I do have a question.
Oh, yes, Mr. Charles.
You say you close it. You still cut the grass? And maintain it? That way? And then, I guess, put up signs, no trespassing? To keep people from entering the premises and then... Well, there's basketball courts, tennis court. All of them that still are of use, but if you're gonna close the park, then they can't be used, right?
Right.
Yeah, they're correct. Due to safety reasons. And the usage of it. I think we spoke about that, didn't we, last meeting? Several times?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm very little, the only ones that are really good news of it is the drug users with their illness.
All the users tearing up stuff?
And then, I mean, just for me, looking at St. Louis City's previous vandalism and just doing a round park, you know, look at it, I mean, just to get it up and fixed and back where it'd be ADI compliant and everything else, you're looking close to fifty thousand just to get there. I mean, we're, there's nothing in the budget to do that. So...
It's been long for what, two years? And nobody was questioning about it, so...
Yeah.
I've only had, in the past year, I've only had one person ask, call and ask to use the pavilion.
I thought they kept us knocked down.
The pavilion's not knocked down.
Is it brand electric too?
The slide was knocked down.
No, that one's still there, the slide got knocked down.
Is the electric still running to the pavilion?
What's left of it. There is electric gas from the system, but somebody's got in that box and messed that electrical box up and hails from the car hood. So it's an open circuit.
You're still gonna cut the grass, isn't it?
Are we cutting the grass? Yes, we're maintaining until we figure out what we're gonna do with the park. Do you have any, like, concerns or about it?
I think it, originally it had sign that said it was donated to the Barlow's children. Which would have been, I guess, Bob and Amy.
Amy and Danny.
And another one that passed away, but... It was dedicated to them, I guess.
It was, it says donate, I believe. Donate by the Barlow's family and trust. Has that flag, are you talking about?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it in a long time, but...
I've got a picture of it, but that thing that says donate is the city St. Mary's by the Barlow's family and trust. Has a date and everything. Anything else, Karen? Alright. Not finished with this. New business. The Purple Wave items that April was nice enough to mail for me, get to you. There's many right now. If anybody see anything on that list that may be an issue with before we proceed with it?
I'm still looking for the chain on that south side.
No, there's two more.
Oh, okay. I was saying, the one, I'm still looking for the chain on that. It's hard for me to find it.
Oh, this one?
That chain.
This yours? Oh, you have that.
So this will be entered into public record stuff or...
Yeah, when I type up the minutes of working on there, yes. It'll be the items.
So for the public, we're removing, disposing of unused inventory. That's city properties, equipments and vehicles. And proceeds from that, we hope to be used for purchase, to be applied towards the purchase of a tractor. And we're also negotiating for a new piece of equipment, a tractor and selling off or trading in the two units that we have, one of which is in need of a lot of expensive maintenance and the other that's operational, but it's not well-suited to our needs. It's two-wheel drive instead of four-wheel drive. And it was decent as a backup, wasn't utilized very much, so hopefully we'll be able to do a swap with some additional funds available to cover the balance of it. And regarding that, we hope to make some progress on it next week.
Yes.
So what are you gonna do this interim way?
As soon as you guys are okay with it, I can call that. Make the guy of the district and get the barcodes where he comes down, stick it on and take pictures. I reckon some of it's running and moving. And, you know, I'll just have to go there and take pictures of everything. Kind of like St. Louis, we've got third going right now, too. And then it goes up and then it's, you know, the Purple Wave, the buyer pays a ten percent. They maybe, do maybe a five dollar fee. That's for pictures, if they really want to. Anything of anything else, or is that list okay for you? I know you said you wanted the latest.
I know, I know, and, yeah.
Might as Franky's spreader.
We can, later if we buy more, we'll let him tell you.
Yeah, 'cause that's what I've seen so far, that's we probably bring in some funding.
Right. I have taken the motion with the...
Yeah.
Do the, put the items on Purple Wave?
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made, second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye, all. Any votes? Alright, motion passed. Good going. On the tractor, I guess you wanna, you wanna kind of go over a little bit about that? We kind of got hit today.
Yeah, it's basically a reiteration of what I just stated. Our, we need a decent tractor to mow with as well as to have available for road service. Blading, bush hogging, using the circle bar to maintain the periphery of roads and as well as ditches and to help with the wastewater treatment plant and hauling off materials that kept them out from the grinder pits. So that's absolutely necessary that the city have that. And without going into a lot of detail, although we have, as I stated earlier, required spent maintenance that we won't be able to afford over the long haul. So it's more economical, cost-effective to go ahead and purchase something that's a newer unit. Probably not going to be new, given the costs involved with it. But I think we should be able to find something that's four or five years old or less. That's a decent tractor, that's suitable for Frankie's needs to be advised. That we have something in the fifty to seventy horsepower range, about sixty horsepower, which allows you to pull the various equipment you need to pull. And should have fewer problems with maintenance in the short haul and down the road. That's impossible to predict, but I think we have some models lined up, both Kubota's and Deers. That suit, suit the bill.
Park middle report, same vote?
As you all know, the river, the acid, since right now we're at like thirty-four, thirty-four something.
It did crash it today, I think. Yeah.
Was it a disaster?
Yeah.
And hopefully within the next day or so, it'll start going down, but other than that...
I don't know, maybe it'll move.
I don't know. We're hoping that rain stays south of us, not north of us.
Police Department.
So Officer Carbit has tendered his resignation, which is now effective. And we thank us for the opportunity to serve here and we thank them in return. And then now we'll be interviewing for a replacement soon. In the interim, Mayor's contacted the county to help cover the deficit created by that. And we'll move forward.
Any others on that side?
I don't think so.
Alright. Fire Department, Mr. Burman.
We had seven calls, five medical, one mutual aid. And then we had a call for a structural damage due to a tree. We were doing the Purple Wave stuff, I was mentioning to my guy the other day, and I think I talked to you about it animal, about the old forty-one.
I saw that.
Oh, was it?
I didn't know that was cool.
Do they own that Purple Wave, do they have it where you set a price?
You can, you can on that. You just said that I would give it to you on that.
And it's a picture of it, I know it's got underneath of it and maybe a plant or something or something.
I just hate to see you collect that, you know, about, you know, this, like, number one. You know, they're only scared of a lot of Barbara now, so.
And they ain't got no update yet on, what time it'll be, August sixth, where the ditch, we're talking about the ditch again. So we're in the process of doing that case. Other than that, it's been pretty well on the ocean.
Street Department. Main thing that we have to, will have to address is that Sycamore Dirt's shut down because of the need to access water lines from a leak there, so currently the street's closed. And we're doing our due diligence, obtaining bids for that. We have three or four bids already for, we'll be able to narrow that down a little bit, which will involve asphalt on Treet Street and third, and a turn around Sycamore. Previously, Sycamore's been a problem because people use it for delivery routes and the corner, the inside corner of that was heavily rounded out by the road being improperly graded and not having sufficient width and angle to allow anything a little bit larger to make the turn. So the inside rear wheel digs in to it and it's heavily weathered. Currently, it has large riprap over it, gravel and some straw bales in on it to control erosion. And some larger riprap has been placed in a ditch there in order to control some of the erosion that's occurring so the existing smaller gravel from the top of the road doesn't wash out and come down the hill and fill in the ditch along Sycamore. And I think, once we make our choice with paving for that, we'll be able to make arrangements to fill in some of the smaller areas around town at the same time.
I'm mad, I've called. I'm on my sixth, you know, company right now. And there's one from Black Diamond, we got one from Jokers. Dean Bowman came down, but they're booked and I didn't have an R. And St. Louis Asphalt is booked out past September before they even do a bid. CP Seal coating out of, against the middle area. They don't do, they reject it. It's too much with them handled, so, I mean, I don't know what you guys want to do with it. I can, actually with Jokers on their, compared to Black Diamond, I think they rely on that. What do you think?
Well, number one of all, regardless of whether it be this or, I just want to state, whether it be this or ground related issues or pumps that we're, you know, trying to maintain our policy like all municipalities do on getting three or four bids and stuff, so we're being economical and planning the stuff that best suits us without putting a strain on our budget. Although, for, looked at the treasurer's report, if you look at it, we're getting up there in terms of our utilization and some of the fund pockets. On Monday morning, I'm meeting with our treasurer to kind of do a quick overview on these different designations and expenditures to make sure that we are utilizing properly what's left as well as being set up for a budget to come in the next couple of months.
I did ask him, he did say he could come on a work session.
Wait, I'm meeting him within...
Why does, we just have to live in that?
No, I'm meeting him within, Monday morning, to read and share the history of the situation.
So wait, do you want me to just keep going with everybody else and like, I'm always trying to get bids?
Well, yeah, you have four or five, I think that's adequate. The main thing now is just to discuss what we get with each one.
I know, I just want to add this.
I know.
In case someone was...
I just asked him, like, why do you build higher, it's got to be hidden.
Well, you keep, like, this, and there's not many people, and then you ask, committed, and then Jokers, like, I played with, they had a little stuff. We can do some of that work. I already done some with, and Al just, when I called, gave him a form of survey. So that'll save somebody there. But, you know, I was thinking, nobody ships seals anymore either. Only somebody does one, other than our island.
Yeah, the cemetery.
It was all very young. Do you have ships in?
The county did the cemetery.
The way we're happening is just stop.
Oh, and he showed a call, Scott's feeder tomorrow.
Well, that road has to be paid anyway, up there.
Well, I tried asking, they had a small favor.
You know, you got a small road?
Yeah, road.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, 'cause that, I'm afraid that does, I haven't checked it since this ring had it.
I looked at it the other night and it's still, it's stable, especially since no one's using it. The smaller gravel area is kind of bunched up a little bit from the water running on the street. But the main thing is it's been closed, so it hasn't been damaged by the, but we need to open it up.
Yeah.
Dead, dead for you needs to be opened up there. That down one.
Yeah.
Perforated ground, later on coming around, what happened there?
We're trying to beat that, so.
On them.
Alright, so, that's the amount of that. Any other thing on the street? Any problem?
Oh, no, no one's mentioned anything to me, but I don't get called too much about that stuff anyways, so... That's the main thing that I was aware of, but I know I was walking in the cemetery that they had traffic on chat down over asphalt.
Chicken soup?
Chicken soup, yeah. And that's, at first, I wasn't, I wasn't that familiar with it, but as I've seen it, I've walked on that road almost every morning, and as I see the days go by, I see that it's packed down, it's more stable, it's actually nice. And around the turn, going to Cemetery Road, where it was done a little bit. I mean, it's still cracking a little bit on the, on the outside inside corner, but really, it looks pretty good for, for how much it's used and I think it's held up pretty well in the interim, so... Okay, so it's, alright.
Water wastewater, Carbit.
Frankie?
Water's been going good, vacuum's been coming back very. I am gonna have to do some flushing here in the next, probably a week here or so. Start flushing the dead ends, 'cause we're kind of low on our chlorine level at the dead end, so we're gonna start pushing some more to the dead end, you know. It's basically stagnant water, I mean, it's still good water to drink, but this is sitting there in the pipe, not enough usage off the three-quarter inch lines, you know, come to that. The other thing is, is had to change an injector out again up at the water tower for the chlorine. Can't help it, you know, a lot of minerals in the county water coming into it, so it chlorid and that does not like each other, so it oxidizes everything in it, so... It puts buildup, so we gotta punch it out sometime, so... But the other thing is, is sewer side. The board crew just hit into one of our sewer discharge zones down here in Berks Creek, it's fixed. They went deeper than what they were supposed to, and I don't know how they ended up doing it, but they did it. They went through the valve box underneath the doll ears and took it out, so we got it fixed. Wastewater plant, got all the sludge haul off, cleaned up. The two started dumping again, and it's, we had a lot of sludge, but thanks to O'Neil, Substate for doing the job they did and taking their time out on the weekends and stuff coming in, you know, and stuff to pump down, so... But we got our stainless pan cleaned out, looks good. The other thing on the sewer plant side, we got a rotor that was acting up. No equipment protein down today, took, I guess, some pictures of it and he checked it out, he said that it was good. It just needs to be greased a little bit more, but we put quite a bit of grease in there at the time.
I don't agree with that.
The bearing needs much to swap.
Or, or smoke.
Or smoke.
Well, he did turn it on, sorry, it's down there.
Yeah, it's full of grease, is why.
Well, I mean, the other thing they do is you turn it on for five minutes and, yeah, it's good.
It feels rather, like, well, yeah.
I'm just saying. Because with it getting hot, we gotta run it day in, day out, you know, both of them, to keep the D.O. up in the mix liquor. The other thing is, I know on the sewer plant, we had one of the engineering firms come down. They did a walkthrough, took some pictures for, I guess, the engineering report. I had two other ones call me, I don't know, they never showed up, April never called me about it or anything, so they called me about it, they never showed up. They asked me questions on the phone and that about it, and anchored from since, Barletton West.
They are, are they?
They answered.
Barletton West.
Yeah, Barletton West. Valerie came down, she, she's one of their engineering people that does the reports. We talked about the whole system down there, the electrical being on and all that, so I guess after they get the engineering report up, send that one to us or whatever. For all the, our bid, what's, what needs to be done or whatever, I don't know if that's a little bit down there, but... The other thing is, you guys know, I guess, know about the lift station up at subdivision? One of the pumps went down, the lining's burnt up in it, no good, we had to pour it, got it up on the ground, I had Dan come down from, and remember the name of it?
Flow systems.
Flow systems.
Flow systems.
There you go, sorry. Flow system. Anyways, he gave us a bid, but you guys, I think, got the bids, I guess, or the quotes.
For sure, yeah. Well, there's the quote for one, I didn't get the quote for the two.
They did.
Oh, you didn't get to check them?
Did you?
Anyways, that one, there is a quote for the one, for one pump. They was gonna, so, for the one pump, it was gonna be five, fifty-five hundred eighty-six dollars. And then it's gonna be a hundred ninety-nine for the two-bolt assembly adapter that goes on for that railing system. They were gonna charge fifteen hundred dollars to start up, to set or, you know, install, start up, and I was like, nah, I can do that. So that was fifteen hundred dollars off of that, and then, and then they, Dan, they gave me a price for two pumps. He knocked two hundred dollars off of each pump. So it's gonna be around, just for the pumps, it's gonna be eleven one seventy-two. And then, for the adapters, bump that up to one ninety-nine. And then freight is gonna be three fifty. I don't know if we can make a trip and go get them ourselves.
Actually, I try.
I'd have to call Dan and see if they're there, if this is the freight coming to them. I don't know exactly what's going on there.
It's try, I can probably, I'll, I'll do it.
But if we can save on the freight, we save money on that way, and then installing's gonna save money, too. If we get one, it's gonna help us out to keep having to go up there every day and pumping it down. But if that one's decided to go out and get the ones out, we don't have no pump at all, so... What I recommended to do on that one, ever, I installed a new pump and I told Dan and Adam about it. I want all new contact area, surge relays, I mean, startup, no startup package to install in that box, so everything's new, 'cause that way if we got a burnt contact or something, we're not phasing the pump out. So anyways, that's, the only reason why, which that's gonna be a little bit more cost, but hopefully it's not too extreme. I know, I think April's supposed to get a bid from Equipment Row on there. And then I'm talking to Dan to get a bid from him on the startup pit, so that way we know which way to go on that. We did install another E-one, uh, Monday, um, we had a pump though, uh, the one that went out in it and, uh, it was going in the basement, so we had to, uh, we get them, uh, the pump down and install. But everything on E-one's working good, I've been around to all of them and everything's pretty spiky on them, so. That's basically all I got on.
I'd like to reiterate, uh, we did have, you know, uh, let us borrow their crane, hoist truck, and that helped us out tremendously. It saved us a lot of money, a lot of money, and, uh, I wanna thank that mayor and everything. Hopefully, you know, we had a good working relationship, because they're having a rough time too, so, real bad. They got stuff we don't have and vice versa. Now, they had to come get it, because.
They needed it.
They needed it, because another company we do use, another name, work on something previous, and all four lift stations come down now, so. So, you know, and then I noticed with me, Frankie, you know, and everybody having that one, how much labor that just cut out. Instead of just having to climb down in there, we can hook them in, scale that out, we could have got three guys part of it.
Now, we were going to say one, but someone came in, so.
I mean, it was, it's turning burn just a bit, you know, and it was just, I, I like that because, I mean, in case we do end up having to get that. So, but, um, I, the pumps, do you think that's gonna last? Because I pumped it down and all of them doodles with me yesterday burning up in the sun, I'm pumping it down.
Normally, it's almost like every day going down.
Yeah, so.
Because it ain't just, it ain't just a lift station just for the subdivision itself, that, the other lift station, the Sabaliner pumps over into that one. So we're taking the flow of it and plus the flow of the subdivision community all into that one lift station, and then that pumps it down to the sewer plant, so. If it fails, it's, if that one's done, in our honey wagon, we don't have enough, enough time to pump that thing down and run load, moving around loads back and forth. That's like twenty foot and by, I think, six foot wide, it's, it's deep, so.
But I got two other bidders to beat, and, um, not flow systems, but the other, T J Rankin, which does not have a capacity to do it. And then another company from them does not carry the parts of that system, like A B S style. So, but he said, without the labor, the pump price is good. That's the pump price is good, so.
They have treated it so good, they are just.
And.
And they're, what we've gotten, like you said, what we've gotten so far is work is so good.
It is, and I agree, and, and it's going in quick, I mean, we had the crane truck, we're getting spoiled, but I mean.
Right.
Yeah, the crane, crane truck, uh, I'm gonna be coordinated, well, I can run up there with my motorcycle, leave that there, drive the crane truck back here and just, you know, run circuit with it, because I, you know, I got.
Because they don't even have a honey wagon. They gotta pay vectors to come in.
Yeah, that's twenty-seven, we picked up this truck.
I mean.
And I picked up the truck the other day.
And I kinda feel bad.
One of those, Mike, yeah.
And they have runners and it's like that, so, I mean, it's like, you know. But we didn't have that pump or that crane truck, we wouldn't have got that out, I mean, it's just, so I, I do thank Letwood for all that.
Yes, very much.
And I don't know, they mentioned maybe we could do a mutual aid agreement. It's not like a monetary, it's, you know, I hope you, you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If you guys are open to it, that was the mayor's.
Back to structure.
And so, just, yeah, that type of things. And then maybe in the future, we can afford a crane truck or something, you know, and sell everything that way, you know, because they, they, unless they get a new one, maybe they just give us a less much, but it'd be nice, but. Do you guys wanna move on to get these pumps? Because, I mean, I was up there yesterday for what, an hour?
Easily.
Easily.
It normally takes about an hour and a half.
And I have, and.
We need to get them in.
Even the backup pump kept, kicked out, they only worked twice, and I had to screwdriver it, you know.
We've been asking with them for about a year now.
And that's kind of.
And maybe walking on for a year now.
Yeah, I replaced, I replaced capacitors and contacts with them already once, and I don't think burning stuff up.
And then also, um, we probably need some more E ones, you know.
Nah, I thought they'd give a price, make sure it end up. But the one bad part about it is, like I said, with E one, is what, what grinders are down is, I gotta get measurements. They give me the right size on the length and everything, so.
Yeah.
I know some of these pits, uh, are really deep and they can't make a hose that long, so it's, uh, too much force on slinging it around in the pits, so.
I did talk to Mary and about what we talked about last night too. A lot of the problem is people throwing things down that they shouldn't be. You know, for ordinance, for nineteen, for twenty specifically, states, if it's not broke, I mean, Joanne broke it down to like biosol, it's pretty much. What I've seen up there, that's just ridiculous. You know, and same day at the apartments, made thirty-two ounce fountain cups, you know, it's, but it's like. Me and him, we talked, we need to revisit it for the price, I mean, we're pregnant, raise it if they keep. But we thought about, if we have to replace a pump, once we replace it, Rob, that's your bait. If you have to maintain it, maybe you can help reiterate with me a little bit.
Basically, I was talking about doing my first job.
In Turlak and the other cities of Mary.
Replaced all their stuff, everything's good, you know, like ran in, and the homeowner, you know, once it's installed, the homeowner, it's their, it's their pump. Now, like, you get the warranty, deal with everything, but once it's installed, if something happens, we take care of it, but the pump is yours, so. And then we take care of the discharge line, so going out there.
Yeah.
Anyways, that, it, I was kinda fluctuating there, seeing how, how that would work, if it would work out better. Because, I mean, if you try to do it right now with these old Meyer pumps, no, but couldn't bring a new system, should buy shit for, you know, long time.
That's what a lot of them have now, because now, like us, can't afford just freebies because they're trashing it, because more people, like Mary said, they take care of their stuff and aren't gonna be flushing as much crap down it, knowing they may have to pay the city or replacement parts. We would still service them in the service line, but that's totally up to you guys, I mean, that just pumps you throughout.
Roundabout way is what that one's intended for.
It does in a roundabout way, but it's been falling off, you know, so I don't know if that's what you guys wanna do or amend the section with these new E ones. It wouldn't be falling the old grinders because they're old, I mean, but the ones we have installed, like Frankie said, give them a labor warranty and they have the manufacturer's warranty. But after that, you know, if there's no much stuff that they're not supposed to, and it's on them, I mean, we'll service and pull it, but it's gonna cost.
We've already got that ordinance, it's such that.
It just hasn't been. It just hasn't been enforced, I guess, and I don't know how to really charge for gallons because it's not in there for like pumping. She's working on that too, I don't know, you guys have an idea.
Well, it's pumping, pumping, and then there's pumping as a result of there being foreign materials in there other than what was intended for.
That's what I'm wondering, Charlie, we got a store in the drying bed, we can't go straight to the plant, so.
Yeah, like needles, plastic stuff, even, you know, Q-tips, like. What's the big deal with tossing a Q-tip into a garbage can next to the toilet? Why does everything have to go down, you know? Many more things that go in there as well that could easily be tossed, you know.
He's had to do it at the apartments, I've had to do it at the apartments, and Cody as well, had to pick out towels, debris, things that shouldn't be in there, but maybe, but they keep calling. You know, even when it's pouring down rain, expect to mess this up that out, but this is a continuous thing, and we got labor costs, we're using a tractor, but.
Yeah, I, I might suggest, like, if we have to pump it out and the grinder pit is for a particular household, and you look down there and there's stuff that's in there that shouldn't be, then they get one warning. And then if they have a second warning, it's the same thing, they get fined for it or, you know, sort of surcharge.
The way we used to do it, is they get one warning, and then if we had to go back again, then we gave our labor, our time, if there was any kind of material that we had to use or replace, and they got charged for it, I'm sorry, but.
When's the last, okay, so when was the last time that I was implemented?
Nineteen eighty-two.
That's when it was made.
Oh.
I used to tell her.
So, what, five years ago or longer or a little longer?
Five, no, five years ago.
That one back. Zero to five.
But I kinda just brought that up about, like, with Spirit Village and stuff, how they did theirs, and how it would, it would improve us more. I mean, we're the one, and what I'm trying to get at is if we do get a grant to do all these grinders, even the grinders that we're doing right now, and have a vote, be like, hey, this is a brand new system, uh, control panel, grinder, everything's hooked up right, you know, I, I felt the paperwork out for it, and being hooked up right and everything. And it's, it's serviced for a year, or, you know, uh, warranty for a year, whether it is a three year, whatever it is, for manufacturing. But like us, after we install it, you know, I'll take consideration for a year, as long as there's no foreign objects sucked in or anything, the pump goes out, then it's still, the city takes care of it. But anyways, if after that, it'd be homeowner, you know, problem, then, so you have fifteen, twenty-five years in the pump, you know, uh, it, I kinda perceive how that would work better for us, because I ain't got a problem with doing it, I mean, installing a new pump, my house, I don't know about, yeah, we're good. And then the other thing is, they're gonna know it's actually on them now, and the foreign objects hanging out, going in the pit.
And every time that they've been in this, the cost went down, it's healthier for the plants, the labor rates went down, I mean.
It's kind of an overreacher, so if we did it before, then, uh, if April, I don't keep, keep track of who gets their pits pumped down, but if they're frequent offenders, then we need to go back to doing what we used to do before.
Yeah, I mean, the pumps that are going down now, they're not, not, not being on it, but the pumps that are going down now, when I go check them out in a pump's bag, that's not on the customer, that's.
Yeah.
That's just on the, you know, pump.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I mean, like.
Talking about when we get the new ones, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, the key pumps or whatever that we got, we do have some new ones, you know, and place newer ones in place of the old ones, but they, like, you know, when it gets hung up with something in my pool, you know, anytime I pull a pump, I check, right? So, got this in there or that in there, maybe old heads, whatever, but, um.
I mean, yeah, and even Turlak, they made their citizens pay for the pumps, so we're not even doing that. You know, just like, once I put that one in, they said, well, can we do an adjustment? I said, well, no, because we didn't, but how many gallons we used?
Oh, yeah.
And I said, you just got a three thousand dollar pump and plus labor and everything, nothing, so, I mean, you know. We're doing our due diligence, but the ordinance, I mean, it drove down to the T, so, plus, you know, it's just one of the things, we just need to, I guess, enforce it more.
Check for you.
And I don't know what to do about, up at the lift station, that thing, I go fishing all day with that.
Well, and first, like I told you last night, what we do is with, so, any, anything that comes from the pump over at Sabaliner, I call it Sabaliner, though. That's the gas station firehouse, couple of other residents over there on that side. Anything that goes in that pump or in that pit is not being sucked, if there's any foreign objects in there, they don't get sucked up or unless the propeller can actually chop it up, then it goes there in slicker form. So everything that's in the subdivision coming out is coming out of the inlet of the main and dropping in, and you can, I mean, I can get you pictures, I mean, there, there's more, um, Kotex dispensers, I haven't seen them a lot, and Q-tips and whatever else is in there.
I saw a good handle in there, it's like, why are we just flushing that handle?
The thing that I did, I think what needs to happen is we send a letter, send a letter out to all the residents in the subdivision, be like, hey, this is, you know, your first attempt warning or whatever. Do not be flushing, you know, Kotex dispenser, you know, uh, hygiene, blah, blah, you know, anything like that, duh, duh. And we suck, we can suck it all the way out. And we can clean it out, I mean, we can clean it, the pit out to where there's nothing in there showing. And then you send them, if you send them that letter, we do that, and it starts falling back in there, then I don't know how we would actually enforce that unless, you know.
Get it spread out between all the.
Yeah.
Connections.
That's the only way to do it.
I mean.
Everybody gets a surcharge for.
Yep.
And then, you know, that's. For nineteen, even it's specific, what he says about that surcharge on there too, it'd be great to read that whole, it's a long ordinance. So, I mean, it's totally up to you guys, is I, if.
And I mean, maybe we can have a work session and discuss this stuff of how we wanna do it, and which way we're gonna go, whatever we wanna do, so. Okay, any questions, so?
Yes. Yeah, so, um, so are you wanting to hold off on the other pumps, or do you want?
No, we need to get them.
So Frankie, can you go ahead and say, you have a motion to make, for a thousand dollars? Oh, because we got, that's the main one that pushes, so.
Well, I mean, we can either one or we get both.
What do you want, what do you mean?
I say we get, we need to get both, because otherwise you're just putting more strain on the other one, and it's gonna go down, so why not?
And it's hard enough, and you gotta hold the main one, so.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so.
It's alternating existence, one pump pitched on one time, the other one, who gets the other one to break?
Were the other ones placed into use at the same time, the existing ones?
What's that?
The ones that are in place currently, were they both placed at the same time?
Yeah, that, that was placed at the same time, the only one that's got a newer pump in it, and that's the one down Sabaliner. Anyway, that was installed, uh, six.
Six?
No, it was about six years ago. Yeah, because the only thing that was wrong with it the last time was the transformer, I don't know, I think we had to replace it, I thought it was the pump, yeah, well, it was the transformer. But anyways, you know, uh, we get both of them, and they'll be here within seven, five to seven business days, or unless, unless we can get them from him for the freight, you know, get her the freight. And then once I get it, everything's solved.
Then it's gonna rise more, so I'm ready to.
Saddlebag.
Right, come on.
So, I guess, a motion to accept flow systems bid for the two pumps?
I made a motion to get them two pumps ordered.
And all favor?
Yeah.
And vote, oh, alright, Frankie gives them.
All in on it.
Alright, any votes in here?
Not that I know of.
Can you get a price on the ten E ones? Can we get a price, we normally should be about ten.
Yeah.
Makes it.
We need four of them.
Yeah. Right, it's on here, um. Alright, citizens' participation. Mark, you got anything?
Well, uh, citizen here, but, um, citizen can't.
You are, you, uh, Mark, you're a board member, you can speak whenever you want to speak.
You wanna double general?
Yes, yeah, we've been trying for years.
I need viable, I need viable property that's not on the flood plan.
Okay.
I know exactly where you get that.
You know, we're just talking to you. Talk to the chain, Joanne's been talking about it. Yeah.
Talk to the chain, you gotta talk to the chain.
Alright.
It's, it's a, the word came to me that it's a prior, priority, but they, uh, they get viable property.
Yeah, we were looking at city properties the other day, the other night.
They're really in deep, mom.
Everyone says get one of them.
I'll take that one, I know.
I know they do this, we almost had, we was two days from, we was two days from it.
They have a firehouse or whatever, but then I know with the mason, well, I'd say we're talking about selling it. They were fire gassed or whatever, but then I know the Mason law, they was talking about selling that.
That's what I said, they was two days from signing, and then there were those, there were those glares. So we had almost, we was two days from getting them.
Yeah, so, viable, all right.
I, this is my, I'm supposedly gonna be talking to the developer.
Okay.
Soon, um, this is my theory, if you have more than one property, that's optimal, we do it. Um, I will be glad to help you out. I think what needs to be done is kind of prospectus or something like that of the properties available. And, you know, utilities that are available to, you know, kind of pros and cons thing, to give to them to, okay, here's what we have.
Yeah.
I'd like to see two, I mean, if you got more than one, I mean, if you got one, okay, but if you have more than one, where you give them a choice. Of where they want it.
Yeah, options.
And, you know, one may work out better than the other for whatever reason.
Yeah, I wish the visionary up there in industrial area, if they, that would work better, because they'd be on gravity fit, they wouldn't have to worry about it on the pump.
They wouldn't, yeah, and, and is that already sound?
There's a water line right there. And that, so that needs to be part of the pros of why you're pushing that particular property, so.
That's why the post office and ART EGM is the Sabre Winner building for that specific reason, and that's all industrial, right by sixty-one too.
Okay.
We can talk to the chairman. Well, maybe it's how they, they.
Do you know if they're antique? Where do you think that was? And how did you ask that?
I can walk right up to that door.
There was one right on sixty-one, I'm sorry, Mark, how much area do they need? That's another thing.
Well, and that's gonna be the que, I have questions of my own, okay, and that's when I talk to, uh, you know, ask them specifics, what kind of utilities they need. Uh, you know, I'll, I'll try to get you a lot of good answers when I talk to them, meanwhile, you know.
Because I don't know, is it one of the markets that you?
I don't know.
Because they got the little ones, I mean, they think pop up overnight.
It'd probably be about big one, one one.
Or the white, white road?
Wind garden.
Wind gardens, okay. Because they.
They don't want, like, internet, we have to go to camera. I would if I could. But I, you know, this is going together a lot quicker than expected, and it kinda scares me a little bit, but that, that's the word to get to me, and like I said, the, the developer's somebody I dealt with thirty something years ago, and I had to, I feel old saying that, but. Did what?
Great.
If I know you want it, I know you need it, go ahead. I don't want you to want it.
Yeah.
I want you to get it, so. Save a lot of people in the community and house.
You got all the intersections, you got Gilson Valley, all that.
Yes.
And your red ones come out.
Red ones, so.
They're spinning around here, so you wanna carry a little one.
Yes.
Someplace else. Please make that.
They don't really have that.
So, yeah.
Um, also, oh, before we do the meeting in German, will you need a motion to accept, uh, or, or any court's resignation?
I make a motion to accept Officer Perman's resignation.
I second.
All fair.
Aye.
Any vote? All right, motion has been accepted, resignation, direct. All right, anybody else have anything to speak about? Frankie, Frankie, either?
Yeah.
I know he needs snacks, so. Um, all right, I make, I make those. I know, I'm tired and I'm in pain.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Third of it. All right, motion made, second, all, all fair.
Aye.
All votes, there, yeah, all right.